Okay, we got a good group here, so boom, boom, boom. I'm calling this meeting to order. And we are assembled here at the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting. Today is Monday, January 20th, January 4th, 2021. And it is 5:31 PM and we are meeting via Zoom, which means that I need to do a roll call for everybody. And so I'm going to start with all there on my right. Teresa, Commissioner Gilreath?
Present.
Commissioner Bridges? Commissioner Fields?
Present.
Commissioner Tovey?
Present.
Commissioner Kern?
Here.
Commissioner Bullock?
Present.
And Mayor Protem has joined us. Happy New Year to you, sir. Can we hear from you? Mayor Protem? Mayor Protem, are you there? Hello? Okay, hearing no response from Mayor Protem Harris. So it looks like he's clicked off, so maybe he's having connection problems. Help me remember to make a note of him that he's in the meeting when he comes back on. And with that, we are assembled here today. The only item of business is to set the agenda for the Tuesday, January 12th, 2021 regular session. So we will open the meeting in prayer by Reverend Bruce Beck of West Oxford Baptist Church, pledged by Mayor Protem. Going down to delegations, we'll have the audit presentation by Carleen Evans with Winston William Creach Evans and Company. Any questions or on that item? Okay, and the discussion item, Rachel Cotter and Chris McLukie with McAdams are here to discuss the feasibility study cost and pool option cost. Mr. Thornton, how do you say that? Is that Chris's last name McLucky or McLukie?
I say McLucky. And the, let me clarify one thing. When you said are here to discuss, they will be here Tuesday, not tonight.
Correct. Right, it's for next week. Okay, and, okay, excellent. And going on to, I still don't see Mayor Protem. City Business Item A for A, consider amending and updating the stormwater ordinance. Our ordinance was written in 2004 and amended in 2017. Excuse me, the fines included at that time are not enough of a deterrent to ensure that regulations are followed. And we have the entire ordinance with amendments in it. Does anybody have any questions on this item?
Have we been having a problem with people violating that?
Mr. Thornton or Amy? Yeah, that was my agree, that was my question as well.
We have been...
Amy, if you could address that one, please do.
We have been getting some pushback from some of the businesses as we do inspections about what authority do we have to enforce these rules? We have not pushed as hard as we might have at this point in time because we don't have a lot of teeth in the current ordinance. But we don't want to be in a situation where the state is coming down on us because we can't make the businesses comply in Oxford.
Why would that fall back on us if they're in violation, ought to invalidate none of the state?
It is up to the cities and municipalities to enforce the state rules.
But how does increasing the fine give us more teeth to enforce? Because it looks like the rule is pretty much, the ordinance is the same. It's the fine announcement, amounts that is changing.
Correct. If you indicate that, you know, their fine is going to be $50 and it costs them $5,000 to fix their BMP, they're going to pay a $50 fine.
It won't be fixed.
Pardon?
It won't be fixed.
It won't be fixed, correct. So if you tell them you can fine them up to $25,000 and they look at it's a $5,000 fix or we can fine them up to $25,000, in cases of per day fine, they're more inclined to fix it. Our goal is not to fine anybody and we're working with everybody that's attempting to work with us. But we want to have the ability, if it's necessary, to move forward with this is, you know, something that the state takes very seriously. And as a result, the city has to as well. There will be new state rules and requirements and they need to update our ordinance coming in about the next six months. At this time, we just want to get in compliance with what the state rules are currently.
So the state rules that are that the fines should be higher?
The state rules don't require the fines to be higher, but that is our ability to enforce the ordinances which are based on the state rules.
Commissioner Kern, do you have more questions?
I don't see how. I mean, what kind of violations have we had?
The violations, for the most part, is that nobody has actually maintained, very few businesses have actually maintained their BMPs since the time they were installed. And so...
And what's that?
It's a stormwater, like a detention pond. If you look at some of the ones, Autumn Park Apartments is a good one. They have trees that are six inches in diameter growing in a, what's supposed to be a dry detention pond or a wet detention pond. Some of the ones that are around in front of Dill by Maria Param Health have large cave-ins in the vicinity of their overflow. We've got others that they've just let the cattails grow up in it. The purposes of those detention ponds is to filter the water before it reaches the streams and the rivers. And if they're not getting the full filtration effect, all it's doing is causing more stormwater issues and drainage issues downstream. Plus, it's not filtering out the nutrients it's supposed to be.
Have we been finding them?
We have not been finding them to date. We have been trying to work with them, but as that some of them are getting a little bit more stubborn, we want to be able to have something to refer to that makes them more willing to correct the issue than for us to actually implement a fine.
If we did increase the fines, would that apply only to future occurrences? Or can you relate it back to the past occurrences?
It would apply to current ones as well as future. Because the state does not differentiate, they don't grandfather anybody in. If you built a BMP after 2004, it was supposed to have been maintained and it has not been.
This is going to be a really retarded question and I apologize for that, but you're the best person to answer it. So having, first of all, can you say what the letters BMP stand for?
Best Management Practice.
Okay, so meaning a stormwater pond is a best management practice?
Correct.
It would, to my little brain that is not knowledgeable in this area, so trees, it would seem to me like trees use water. So if they were actually in there, that would not be a problem because they would take up water out of the soil. But obviously, it is a problem. How does that work?
The state has several designs, whether it's a wet detention pond, a dry detention pond, grassy swales, there's a number of best management practices that businesses can utilize and install. But, you know, what they need to do once they have installed them is maintain them. There's a new one out by the, you know, relatively new with it in the city by Duke Health across from Revlon. Their pond had some minor things that needed to be done. There's one next to Walgreens that they let the grass grow up so high that it was actually an eyesore. And Cheryl actually went after them because of it being noncompliant with, you know, the regulations for maintaining height of grass. If it's that tall, it's not serving the purpose that it needs to serve. The AA self-storage out on College Street, looks like they have a big pond area in front of it. Some of that was actually looking good, but there were other parts that were not. So, you know, getting these things into compliance, the state has actually extended when they will enforce their rules on the municipalities because there's so many questions about how much they're going to fine the cities. And so we've been working with a consultant in the state trying to determine how much they're going to come back on the city. And the goal is, we don't want to be financially responsible for, you know, businesses not maintaining something that by law they've supposed to been doing for a decade and a half.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the state is giving us a certain amount of time to get these businesses on track, correct?
Correct.
Are we planning to send like a notice to each of these businesses to let them know that they have until a certain date to do these corrective measures or fines will be forthcoming? I mean, you know, because when I heard you say, to this point, we had not fined anyone, it seems to me that we do want to make sure we're giving sufficient notice, you know, of the concerns of the state and what we're going to do if they fail to comply.
We have already sent out notices to, I think, all but one or two and gave them a deadline that they either needed to comply by or get in touch with us and say, it's kind of like the backflip ordinance where we said, okay, if you get in touch with us, we understand that some of you have more to do than others. And, but you need to make contact with us within 30 days. Tell us what your plans are, how long you think it's going to take. Because some of these systems have to be re-engineered because they've been neglected for so long. And then, once they, you know, give us their game plan, we work with them on that. There are some others that are, you know, some of them, pretty immediately, you know, Walgreens is a nationwide firm. They know they do this in other municipalities. It was kind of, yeah, we should have been doing this, we just kind of let it slide. Other places are a little bit more resistant, shall we say? And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to move forward with implementing these increased fines so we can have something to say, all right, if you don't want to comply, then we will, you know, actually have to move to the next stage, which is, you know, actually fining you. We don't want to do that. The goal is compliance. It's not something that we have a say in. It's a state mandated requirement. We are here to enforce the state requirements.
All right, let's pause for just a second. Mayor Protem Harris, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, so let the record note that Mayor Protem was able to log on. Thank you, good to see you and Happy New Year. Thank you for allowing that and thank you for the explanation. And any other questions? I have one, but please, everyone, continue on with any questions you might have for Ms. Ratliff.
Well, I've got a comment. I mean, I can see us trying to enforce what we have, but I received this Thursday and I don't think I would be willing or ready to vote on this next Tuesday. And I don't think, I don't know if I'll ever be able to want to vote on it. Because I would enforce, could enforce a $25,000 per day fine. And it's a discretion of one person with the city. If there's an appeal that comes to us, I'm not in favor of it. I'm not in favor of it being on the agenda next Tuesday. I think we should have a meeting, public works meeting, to discuss what we need a little more information about.
Just to let you know, our enforcement response plan for both the fog, fat oils and grease and the sewer use ordinance, both have fines up to $25,000 in them.
Did we vote on that?
Yes, you did.
Is the fine of $25,000, is it up to a maximum of $25,000 total? Or is, because the way it's written is $25,000 per day, which just seems kind of over the top?
Which is what the state can fine us. We patterned some of the language in the stormwater after what the state has in language that they can fine the city. And the goal is that the city is not going to take the hit for noncompliance. Now, our goal is certainly not to find anybody, you know, anything close to this. And even with the fine up to $25,000 with the sewer use ordinance and the fog ordinance, the maximum fine we have ever imposed was $5,000. And those folks were blatantly dumping grease down a storm drain. So...
Amy, let me understand this correctly. If a company don't comply, if a company does not comply with the city ordinance, the state can come in and in turn, fine the city for not complying?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is the ordinances for other jurisdictions, are they written with the fining going up to $25,000 a day? It's the per day thing that really is kind of staggering.
Yes, they are. And, you know, this is also discretionary. The language allows it, but the likelihood that we would ever go to that actual maximum would probably be pretty slim. It would have to be a pretty grievous noncompliance situation.
Mayor, let me add something here. Amy mentioned the word discretionary and, you know, the concern that I see board members have is, you know, what is the responsibility of the city to the state in that we are creatures of the state? My take on it and understanding of the entire thing is, in regards to the state having stormwater requirements for all municipalities in development, is that it's discretionary as well. Now, if the state comes in to Oxford, part of the discretionary is going to be, what steps have you taken to mitigate these issues with these individual businesses that have these stormwater BMPs? So if you haven't done anything, if you've ignored it, then you run the risk of, you know, the ire of the state, so to speak. Now, if you've put your ordinance in place, you've attempted to enforce it, you've inspected on a regular basis, all of those things, then your potential for receiving a significant fine because somebody just refuses to do it is going to be significantly reduced. If you ignore it completely, then that's where you get into, you know, the issues like dealing with the IRS or something like that. So, you know, we are trying to do everything that we can do to be in compliance. This is, as you can see from the heading or the information provided, the City of Oxford implemented its stormwater ordinance in 2004. And I dare say that the City of Oxford didn't go running right out as soon as the rules passed the General Assembly to adopt a stormwater ordinance in 2004. So it was the late 90s, early 2000s that all of this really got going and became essentially law from the state of North Carolina to get a handle on stormwater. So it's been going on a long time and a lot of the concerns that have stretched this out for so long are really coming from smaller municipalities. I mean, you take, for example, you know, the Biscos, the Kinleys, the Ahoskis of the world. You know, it's not Charlotte Mecklenburg or Apex. And those municipalities have, you know, had serious concerns about, you know, how am I going to regulate stormwater? I don't have an engineer on staff. I don't have this, I don't have that. Every time I hire a consulting engineer, it costs us money. I have very few businesses, I don't want to run them off, you know, on and on and on. You can kind of see where all this is going and where it's coming from. So this has been going on for decades, literally. And now it's getting to a point to where the state is wanting to be a little bit more heavy-handed or that's the indication that we are getting from Raleigh, is that they are wanting, again, municipalities to more strictly enforce their stormwater code requirements because they are in place all across the state of North Carolina for development. And it's a fine line, I mean, it really is. You would hate to fine anybody. We hate to fine anybody for backflow prevention devices not being implemented properly. But it's just another one of those tools that you have to have in your toolbox, unfortunately, to gain compliance. And where that comfort level is versus where is the best level for it to be set to get attention, I think that's where we need to have the conversation. I don't think that, you know, the conversation needs to be about where the law is because the law is pretty clear as far as them being required. And if you're going to require them, they need to be maintained. And that's really the issue that we have is, you know, somebody, you know, you go out to the State Employees Credit Union, you can see, you know, those stormwater retention ponds on either side of it. And they maintain theirs fairly well. But, you know, you put a stormwater retention pond in in 2005 and ownership changes once or twice. You see the condition that they can get into very quickly. And all that we are really trying to do is get people to maintain, you know, the devices that they put in. And if they do so, they don't hear from us. It's the ones that really get into a situation to where they are not performing as designed and are releasing, you know, stormwater and oils are off the street and parking lots and trash and doing all those kinds of things that run right into the Tar River that create the issues. And, you know, it's, stuff rolls downhill. And this is rolling downhill from Raleigh to Oxford. And I think, again, it's a question of what is most appropriate to, when Oxford tries to wield the hammer, that, you know, we get enough people's attention so that they will actually take action versus just going, yeah, I'll pay a $10 fine, I don't care. So that's really kind of where we're at with all of this. And I think Amy would welcome, you know, some conversation amongst the board to determine what is appropriate because, you know, we don't want to be overly burdensome on our business owners and our businesses here in Oxford. And I think that's some of the concern that I'm hearing.
Commissioner Bridges, hang on just a second. Commissioner Kern, Commissioner Bridges has raised his hand and Commissioner Gilreath as well. So Commissioner Bridges, take it away.
All right. I probably should know this, but who decides whether or not a business is going to be fined? Is that you, manager, or is it Ms. Ratliff?
It is not me. We have someone who is basically certified in stormwater BMP inspections. That person is the person going out there and doing it, similar to code enforcement, but it is somebody that has certification for stormwater.
Can we, and the second part of that question is, can we as a board set an amount, a maximum amount for a business to be fined unless, you know, you come back to the board to get more?
I'll let Amy answer that one, but I believe that you have a range that you can, you know, implement fines up to kind of thing.
Well, it's currently written that the Stormwater Administrator, which is currently myself, and I would be working with consultants that, you know, have more certification than I do and more familiarity to say, what have you seen as a normal fine for this type of violation? What I did when we enforced the fog ordinance was work with the city manager at the time to say, okay, I'm starting them out at a, you know, $100 fine, then I'm going to $250, then I'm going to 500, then I'm going to 1,000. You know, by the time we got to 5,000, they had had multiple opportunities. It's not that we started at $25,000 fine. We start lower and then start increasing it as they ignore it. And, you know, the goal is to get their attention. And if, you know, a smaller amount doesn't get their attention, and I, you know, before I would implement any significant fine, I would certainly have a conversation with the city manager. And if we were going all the way to the level of something, you know, it's significantly high, I'm sure that conversation, you know, we would look at whether or not it needed to go to the board before it was actually implemented. I'm not going to go out and just implement a $25,000 fine at somebody because they said I had, you know, a really bad haircut. That's just not my style. You know, my goal is that we are compliant with the state requirements. As Alan said, these have been requirements that have been in place for decades. And, you know, the Rallies of the world that have had the opportunity and the staff to actually move forward with these fines and inspections on a regular basis, this is, you know, old hat to them. They've been doing this for years. We're trying to play catch-up because the state has gotten to the point where being small is no longer an excuse. And the fact that we are small, they say, you've still had more than ample opportunity to get this into compliance. And if you don't, we will get your attention if you can't get their attention. And so certainly, you know, the fines are actually in line with what we have in some of our other ordinances. They're not something that we have not seen or the board has not adopted for other types of situations. And we certainly have not, you know, levied a $25,000 fine for fats, oils and greases or sewer use ordinance noncompliance, but it's there if we need it.
Commissioner Gilreath, then Commissioner Kern, then Commissioner Tovey. I, so, thank you.
We're not just talking about the, for lack of not knowing what is really called, the pond sitting outside of the credit union, that body of water. We're talking about anyone who's discharging, you know, chemicals or whatever that could get into the water source to end up in the Tar River or wherever, right? I mean, so if I'm a farmer and I'm discharging, you know, absorbent amounts of fertilizer and it's running in such a way that it contaminates the water stream, technically, I as an individual person, not a company, not a business or anything, just Teresa the gardener, could be fined this, right?
No, these, the stormwater ordinance, you know, and do I need to talk to somebody about coming and looking at what you're farming?
Not, 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 not in the next couple of days.
But, you know, what this is, you know, the goal of the stormwater ordinance is when new buildings, commercial buildings are put in, even new subdivisions, that they have a stormwater management plan which handles the runoff from the houses, the buildings, the roofs, the sidewalks, the driveways, the roads, so that it can capture all the, everything that you don't want to go into the Tar River. And so it has an opportunity to filter that out and allow just clean water to pass through. And if the pond is not functioning appropriately, then everything either passes through sometimes, you know, and the ponds actually also assist in reducing the flooding that occurs when you put in a lot of impervious area where there was once pervious grass trees to absorb the rainwater. When all of a sudden you have all this asphalt, you have all of this, you know, roof, you got a lot more water that's just sloughing off. So the ponds are designed to catch that water and let it drain off over a 24-hour timeframe so that it's not all just going immediately downstream. And I know y'all have heard on more than one occasion about the drainage issues in Oxford. So this is another measure to help reduce stormwater issues, you know, from occurring. And if we don't keep the ponds in adequate shape, that they are not functioning, they're not retaining the water and it's passing straight through and causing flooding.
So this is only applying to those ponds?
It applies to ponds that were installed after 2004, rules that we implemented and that meet certain requirements. So in the stormwater ordinance, if you are over... So in the stormwater ordinance, if you are over half an acre of a commercial development or over an acre for a single family residential, then we have to look at several different components to say, okay, these rules apply to you and you need to put in a detention pond. You know, the new Enon Electric that went out on in out on Lewis Street, they had to put in a detention pond. It depends on what the situation is. You have to have so much built upon area on based on the amount of land that you are developing. If you're developing less than 10%, say you're developing one acre out of 100, you know, then that's going to be less than 10% of that parcel. Now, if you're trying to skirt the rules and let me just develop this a little bit at a time so I can work in that gray zone, we're going to look at that very closely to see if you are doing what you can to meet the letter of the law without meeting the intent of the law.
Yeah, and honestly, this this applies to essentially any land disturbing activity. So, you know, if you've got a developer coming in, putting in a hundred lot subdivision, they have to submit a stormwater management, you know, plan to the city that the city approves. And based upon what they choose to do, then that tells you what category of BMP you have to have. I will also say this, that since the stormwater regulations were approved by the state, and Amy can correct me if I am wrong, part of this process is that when they put this in place, the BMP that is, that they have to sign an agreement and file it with the city for the maintenance of that BMP. So they enter into this knowing what their responsibility is. And, you know, a lot of it is like I described earlier, over time, things change hands and ownership or people just get, hate to say it, but slack and and let it go. But they still have, you know, knowledge of what their responsibility is because of the agreement that they had signed when they built this development.
And and that's correct to a certain extent. Unfortunately, the O and M agreements were not required prior to my joining the city. And so we are going back on facilities that should have signed an O and M agreement and did not. And we are requiring them to now sign the O and M agreement. And we're trying to get them, you know, give them the knowledge that they need so that they understand why this is required, what the benefit is, not only to them, but to the city as a whole. And to make sure that we work with them and give them a reasonable timeframe that, you know, if you just need to mow the grass, then you should be able to get that accomplished in 30 days. If you need to take out 36 inch, you know, diameter trees, then we anticipate that's going to take longer and is more expensive and you may have to plan and budget for that. So we're working with these individuals on a case by case basis. It's not a 30 days. And if you don't have it in compliance, we're we're finding you $25,000.
Thank you. Commissioner Kern.
Well, I'm looking at the penalties that we had. And they range from $50 to $500. Different ranges, 100 to $1,000 per day. So if we had enforced what we already got, there would not be six inch trees out at Alden Park. Because a hundred dollars a day, they owe you $3,000 at the end of the month. Say that time 12, they owe $36,000 at the end of the year. If we had, if we enforced what we got, I don't think we'd have a problem to begin with. I don't see that trees get to be six inches big in a retention pond without saying, we aren't doing our job. And according to what Commissioner Bridges asked, it says the city engineer of the city of Oxford is the administrator to enforce provisions of this ordinance. And if there's a disagreement, appeals, they come to the board. So it would be us to up to the board commissioners to hear and decide appeals from any order.
It it goes from me to the city manager to the board. You're correct. And if we had adequate staff to have somebody doing these inspections and have, you know, kept.
Well, it's 20, it's $25,000 to give you adequate staff. I I don't think that's the answer. I mean, if if we're not going to inspect them, we're not inspect.
What we recently entered into an agreement for a consultant to come in and do these inspections because we don't have the staff to do it in house. And so we have been working with McGill and Associates to go out and inspect all of the facilities that we have determined to be within the city limits. We found some, the AA Storage on Industry Drive, formerly 84 Lumber, they actually squeaked in in 2003. So that big pond out in front of them with cattails and everything, technically, we can't do anything about that. It was built as a BMP that they voluntarily did in 2003. But because it's before our ordinance was enacted, we can't do anything to enforce their maintenance of it. But we have not had staff in house that have had the time to do any of these inspections.
But I think what, if I'm following what Commissioner Kern is saying, and I I certainly had that same thought, which is, you know, he mentioned a hundred dollar a day fine, but we have one on page 24 under paragraph B penalties for development that is can range from 50 to 500. So if we were doing 500 over the course of 10 days, that's $5,000. So I think what's the concept, what's difficult to grasp is the statement that what we have is inadequate when it sounds like we haven't gone all the way to enforcing what we do have in the sense that we we're fining people and we're not getting any action. It would, what you had said in the beginning is we're trying to work with people, but they're not responding. And generally speaking, it seems like when somebody doesn't respond, then you fine. And I, you know, would imagine that I would respond to $500 a day.
And.
Or 100 a day.
And.
Because a day goes by pretty fast.
And we certainly can start implementing the fines that we have, but the fines that we have, if the state comes back on us, would not recoup what we would end up having to pay for the state. So if we're fining $100 a day and the state is fining us $1,000 a day, we're losing $900 a day in collecting fines if the the business does not comply.
But right now, we're not fining anything. And we could still get fined by the state, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We have not started implementing fines because we're still working with them on compliance and giving them the opportunity to comply.
Okay, Commissioner Kern, and I I just wanted to dovetail because his comment was right in line with what I was thinking. Commissioner Kern, do you have any more comments before we go to Commissioner Tovey?
No, go ahead. I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Tovey.
No, thank you. I I think you all make valid comments about this fine business and how we find them or not. My fear is that the state will come down on us before we can get things in place, you know, like a fine or something. So how long would it take maybe to start implementing fines for these people? The present fines I'm talking about.
We could certainly start looking at sending out fines in the next couple of weeks and to give them a heads up if they have not been doing what is necessary.
Right. Sorry, yeah, you have been working with these companies, you said, to try and get them compliant. Is they, have they got a reason or an excuse that they haven't done this?
Some of it is as as minor in in the fact that they will not accept the consultant speaking on behalf of the city and they want to speak to me directly. And I have not had an opportunity to contact them back to say, this, the con, you know, consultant is speaking on our behalf. And if they have told you that this is what you need to do to be in compliance, this is what you need to do.
Fair enough.
Those things that, you know, we are spread too thin in engineering and we don't have enough opportunity to get back to everybody as quickly as we would like.
Do we not have a system of sending a letter the same way we do in code enforcement where a letter goes out and it says this is the deal? And if you don't comply, we're going to start fining you? Because isn't that what happens in code enforcement?
We're we're trying to go from zero to 100 with enforcing a stormwater ordinance that's been in place for a decade and a half. And to say, you know, you have 30 days, you know, the one with code enforcement, they have had something in place and fines going out on a regular basis to to send a letter out the first time and say, you're noncompliant and we're going to fine you. And they say, what do you mean? We didn't even know that this ordinance existed. We felt that was unfair. So we sent out a letter and said, you have 30 days to get in touch with us or get in compliance. And a number of them got in compliance. A number of them got in touch with us after 30 days. A number of them said they never got the first letter. So we sent it some, you know, again. And so it's been a, you know, process of trying to get this up and running and with the assistance of our consultant.
If you're going to find somebody $100 a day or 500 or 25,000, you send them a letter, you send them a registered letter and they sign for it. Regardless of what you're going to find them, they can always say they didn't get it. If you're going to find them a dollar a day, they say, well, I didn't get that letter. And so I just think we are not doing our part of the job. If they don't believe what the consultant tells them and they to hear from you, you send them a letter. This consultant represents the city of Oxford. The fine will start in 30 days, 100 a day or 500. I don't see where telling them it's 25,000 a day makes any difference if if we don't get in touch with them. If we don't get in touch with them, you can tell 100,000 a day.
We have got in touch with them. And we have sent them letters about what they need to do. We have not started implementing fines.
Well, I think we should.
We certainly can go go ahead and move forward with the fines we have. One of the things that I'm concerned about is whether the state comes back on us and whether or not we will be bearing the cost of fines that the state is, it's unbalanced. We're finding them 100, they can find us 1,000. And wanting to make sure that the city does not get caught with having to pay for the errors of the the businesses that are in not in compliance.
That's a, that's a fair statement. I'm I worried about the state as well if they come down on us. But my concern is the city. So.
Other questions from other board members? Okay, I have just two last ones that are related to this. So I guess one of the people in our city that has the huge surface area, which is Granville Corners. So do they, they were constructed before 2004 or so? I mean, I'm not aware that they have a retention pond. So we've got people with huge huge stormwater runoff because of impervious surface, but they're exempt. Do I understand that correctly?
That is correct. Until they do any upgrades, expansions on the property, and then they have to comply with the rules for the expansion portion.
Okay, so that's just a shame. And this is a question that I had that from somebody in the community that has called, who's out in, what is it Meadow? Is it Meadow Brook that's out off of Country Club Road, the subdivision back there where we did paving? Is that?
Meadow Heights, Meadow Brook.
Okay, so she gets terrible flooding in her backyard because she has a stream running that's catching huge amounts of water that are coming coming in under the road and going all the way through that development. And past her property, the stream is full of trees. So she's experiencing, I believe, exactly what you're speaking about, that when the water can't be going through the way that it's supposed to, the consequences runoff and it's, does she have any recourse? Because that's, it's, it isn't, it doesn't fit in these guidelines, but the the property owner next door who is allowing all these things to grow up, her property is the one that's being affected.
Since the city does not maintain on private property, that right now is considered to be an issue between two property owners. Now, whether the city in the future likes to take a more active role in those type of situations, that remains to be seen. But at this point in time, private property is is not something that the city is going to maintain. Otherwise, we would not have any funds in the stormwater. And trying to police everybody on private property would become, you'd need a couple of additional staff just to do that.
Right. But since we're funneling, we don't have any responsibility since we're funneling huge amounts of water to go into this particular gully from, I mean, I think this is the one that's related to the culvert that we put in that's under the road. It might might even be a double culvert and it's catching all the water. There's was a huge amount of water coming through that we're directing to that area.
Um, I don't believe the water from that that is causing the issue in Meadow Heights has anything to do with the culvert that we put in on Ivy Day Road.
No, not Ivy Day. There's a culvert that goes under one of the main, and we can talk about that later, but it just all of a sudden, as you were talking about the trees, and I thought, oh, my gosh, I had this complaint from this woman exactly like this, explaining how the water is not being able to go through. And so it's all coming up and eroding.
My understanding of that.
We can get into that later. That's that's a whole nother subject for conversation. And there's a lot of case law regarding storm stormwater and private property and who's responsible and all those kinds of things. And this lady has spoken to me and she has spoken to engineering and to the public works folks as well. I've been out there and looked at it. And, you know, I'm I'm very careful about using any term of we funneled. We didn't funnel anything. God funnels the water where it runs for the most part. It's going to run to the lowest point. And unfortunately, she's at a lowest point. And, you know, we we can have that conversation a little bit later, as deep as you want to get into it in regards to that particular situation.
Sure. That's that's it. Now, Commissioner Kern, you had at one, oh, Commissioner Bridges has a question, and then I'll go back to what I was going to.
Yeah, just a brief question. We don't really have a choice here, do we? I mean, you know, we, I mean, we kind of have to say that these businesses will have to be fined if they don't come in compliance because, you know, like Commissioner Toby said, we, the state's going to come down on us. You know, I I mean, I'm hoping that that the application of fines are done in a very reasonable manner because, you know, we need these businesses because they employ people and they they provide, you know, a tax base for the city. And so we don't want to, you know, cause problems. But I don't think we really have a choice whether or not a fine is imposed with someone who doesn't comply.
Not if you actually want to have an enforceable ordinance. The question is, at what level do you set the fines? And then it's the old catch 22 of it. What level do you set the fines so that the ordinance is effectively enforceable and people don't ignore it? And that's part of the conversation that I think we're having that's wrapped up all into this. I don't, I don't know what that point is, you know, that gets someone's attention. I dare say that it it might be where they do get that first fine and they understand that it is a per day fine and that mounts up per day pretty quickly. So, you know, I don't have any issue with Amy and I having an additional conversation about how we enforce this stormwater ordinance. You know, if we have the support of the board in doing that, even at the level of fines that we have established now, as long as it is understood that we are going to enforce this if we have violations because, you know, these are a lot like a number of things. As soon as we start enforcing some of these As soon as we start enforcing some of these laws and regulations, it's kind of like what we just went through with the backflow prevention ordinance. They start calling you. They start calling board members because it costs them something to do this and they don't like it. And they know you or go to church with you or whatever. And, you know, then we go back around and around and around. As long as it's understood that, you know, this is a state law that is passing on down to municipalities and the state has the ability to come in and go, you're gonna do it or we're gonna find you. And I can't tell you when that would be, nor if it would be, or what they would do if they actually came in and did that. I mean, they have been threatening that for many years. I'll just be honest with you. They have been threatening that for many, many years. And I think it is getting to the point, like Amy said, where they are work their way down from the Durhams, the Rollies, the Charlottes, the Greensburrows of the world, and they're getting to smaller ones of going, you've had adequate time now. It's been, you know, 20 years. It's time to get your ducks in a row and we expect you to do it. But, you know, whether or not that actually comes into realization and when and how bad they would do that, I don't know. The state can be reasonable and can be unreasonable. It's just to a point of, I think, you know, using common sense, that if you have an ordinance in place, if you're attempting to enforce it, if you are requiring these BNP's in development as it comes in, if you're having the signed agreements for the O and M of the BNP's, if you're doing all of those things, then the state is gonna look at it as, yes, they're attempting to do their job. I don't think the state's gonna come in and find us, you know, $100,000 because we're wrangling with Walgreens over a $5,000 fine potentially to get them to clear the trees or the grass out of their, you know, pond. I just don't, I don't think that's gonna happen. But it gets, it's a point of just where it gets down to the local level. That is really where the rubber hits the road in the conversation that we're having right now. It's where do you take it? Because it will work its way back to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bullock, did I see you raise your hand?
Well, Mr. Thornton just made one of the points I was gonna make. And then, to me, it still boils down to an enforcement issue on whatever the rates are. Because if you stop and think about it, whether it's a $5,000 maximum or $25,000 maximum, if we're only charging $500, the state's still gonna come in and charge fines 25,000. Doesn't matter what our limit is from where we're starting. As we said earlier, we're gonna go low and increase it as it goes. I'd like to see us just really work on enforcing the levels we have now. And if we need to, we can bump it on up.
So we have a suggestion from Commissioner Bullock and we have Commissioner Curran who had had said that that he was interested in having further discussion through, you know, a Public Works Committee meeting perhaps. And of course, we've had quite extensive discussion right now. What what is the desire of the board? And can you hear me? Am I breaking up? I'm breaking up a little? Okay, hang on, let me get my video off. Okay, is this better? What is the pleasure of the board with respect to, you know, either continuing the discussion in a committee meeting or as Commissioner Bullock said, working towards, and I believe that Commissioner Curran did as well, working towards enforcing the fines that we already have on the books before we, you know, to essentially assess whether they're effective as they are, if they're implemented or not, I guess, would be the way of looking at it before we change. What, do we keep this item on the agenda? What would the board like to do?
I say enforce what we got.
Yeah.
You know, I believe the state, if we go go ahead and move forward now and do, you know, do with, do the fines based on what we have now, I think the state will not frown upon that. But I I don't, I'm not, I'm not thinking that another meeting is necessary. I mean, I just think we just need to enforce what we got.
Yeah.
We've had enough discussion. All right.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Keep it on the book. So we're gonna keep it on the book for Tuesday night with 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 keeping our fines as is.
Well, it doesn't need to be on. If we're not going to adjust the fines, then there's there's nothing, there's nothing to consider in a meeting.
Right.
Am I correct, Mr. Thornton?
Right.
But who's gonna?
Yes, ma'am. That item would be removed if the board, if I'm, if the consensus of the board is, of what I'm hearing currently, is to address the issues with the fines that we currently have available and rely on a little bit more enforcement. Again, with the understanding of the board that once we start actually fining people, you're gonna get some calls. And, you know, staff just, staff just wants support. You know, we're just doing our job and enforcing the law. So when they start contacting us, you know, please say, we don't have a lot of choice, unfortunately. It's state law that's now rolling downhill onto us. And the fines are nowhere near what they could potentially be. And all we expect is their compliance.
So Commissioner Gilreath, go ahead.
If if they really are, if if they're not in compliance and they've been told to do so, they refuse to do so, the state comes in and finds us $25,000, then we still need to recoup that amount of money from someone.
Well, that's part of the conversation. I don't know that the state is gonna come in and just, you know, give you a $25,000 fine.
If there is, or maybe we should just change the language, not have the amount, but whatever the state fine is.
I think that may be more of a legal question that we need to look into with our city attorney and stormwater folks that can you do something like that if the state? Let me just look into that a little bit. But I think that, you know, we would be effective on a number of these because you have, going back to page 24 and half of page 25 in there where it talks about fines of 500 to $1,000 a day that we have currently for violations, you know, within a week's time, a $5,000 fine for something like that, that is a significant violation. I think we'd recoup that pretty quickly, if not get their compliance.
Right.
So was the thinking that if we raise the fines by this tremendous amount, what would happen is they would get a letter and instead of the letter saying we can fine you 50 to $500 a day, if the letter says we're gonna fine you 1,000 to $25,000 a day, what would happen is they would immediately jump to just for, without ever having to be fined? Was that kind of, because when I'm hearing Amy say and you say, well, just be prepared to hear from people, it sounds like what you were thinking is if you have these new very high amounts, then everybody will immediately comply just for fear. Is is that what you were thinking? And we would never have.
Ms. Ratliff speak to that one, but I'm sure that that's, you know, part of the equation. You know, it's it's the effect that you're looking for as well as reducing the amount of back and forth and back and forth and back and forth that is required. If I receive something saying I can get up to a $25,000 per day fine, I'm gonna go take a pretty darn good hard look at seeing what I can fix very quickly. But if it says, you know, $50 or 500, I'm gonna address it or look at it on what a scale it is for me to make those corrections versus paying this fine and putting it off for as long as I possibly can. That's that's just the nature of the beast. That's human nature. That's how it goes. And like Amy said, we're stretched. Everybody here is stretched, you know, pretty thin. And, you know, this has been in place since 2004. And, you know, some of what you're hearing is being conveyed to you that, you know, since 2004, a lot of it wasn't kept up with the way that it should have been. And I'm not gonna always make an excuse of, you know, don't have adequate staff and personnel, you know, to do things for something that's been in place since 2004. And I'm not casting any dispersions upon Amy or anyone else. But, you know, if it's been there since 2004 and you've had a, say, a stormwater pond that has had a tree or a dike break or whatever going on since 2006, and it was there until 2016, and you never looked at anything, you never enforced anything, never had an agreement requirement with ownership, then it just doesn't look good. And that's a part of what we are facing now in trying to play catch up to get into compliance.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bridges.
I would just simply say, well, we hadn't fined anybody up to this point. And so it seems to me that you start out fining at a reasonable level and then go up if you have to. If we had tried to find people based on the present circumstances of our, you know, rule, then I would feel differently about it. But we've not fined anybody. So we don't know if $100 a day will work because we've not tried it.
Okay. Thank you. So do I need, I think I need to have a motion to remove this item from the agenda and to instruct staff to, look, it looks like I'm breaking up again, I'm sorry, and instruct staff to implement the policy as it's currently written with the fines as they are and then come back to the board if there is evidence of a failure to communicate as that Paul Newman movie used to say. If people aren't following through on the the fines, then we need to hear about it. Is that is that correct, what we need to, is that the action that we need from the board right now, Mr. Thornton?
I think you've captured the gist of it. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bullock to remove this item and implement the policy fully, including fines as it is written. And is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, I'm gonna start to my right. And I have Commissioner Gilreath, what say you?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Toby?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Harris?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. So this was a hugely informative and invigorating discussion. And I want to thank everybody, including Amy or Ms. Ratliff and Mr. Thornton for engaging with us on so many levels. We really appreciate having this kind of discussion about any issue. But tonight, thank you very much for that. So we move from that item to item B, 4B, which is to consider adopting the Clean Water Education Partnership Memorandum of Understanding that we've been a member of the Clean Water Education Partnership. And they now would like to have a formal memorandum of understanding for their services. Are there any questions from any members of the board on this item? Okay, I have two very quick ones. Have we historically been paying dues as part of our membership? Because page two of this agreement says that they will set fees.
Yes, ma'am. We have been paying fees for some time. They've recommended this MOU for the reason that the states are starting to crack down, that this is for the municipality's protection, not for theirs.
Right, right. Okay, that's fine. And then just if you can get with Cindy on the proper spelling of my name where I'm supposed to sign, that would be great. But I think they probably did that and it's that needs to be redone. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Moving to item C, consider adopting a series resolution authorizing the issuance of the bond. We had previously issued a $5 million water and sewer system revenue bond anticipation note, series 2019, this past October to finance the construction of capital improvements for our water and sewer system. And at this time, with the majority of the work being done, the staff recommends that we authorize the issuance of the bond and the sale thereof to USDA and the terms of the bond, which are in attachment for C. Does anybody have any questions on this item at this time? Okay. Great. Then we go forward to item D, which is to sign the reaffirmation statement of our Code of Ethics for 2021. And that's pretty straightforward. And the consent agenda. So with that, I will ask if anybody has anything else that they would like to say or add, starting with Mayor Pro Tem Harris?
No, ma'am.
Okay, going from my right, Commissioner Gilreath?
No.
Commissioner Bridges?
Uh, no.
Okay, Commissioner Fields?
No.
Commissioner Curran? Commissioner?
No.
Okay, you're good. Commissioner Bullock?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, and one, two, three, four, five. See, oh, Commissioner Toby, there you are. I apologize.
No, just Happy New Year to everybody.
Well, I completely agree with Happy New Year. And I just want to say what an awesome group of colleagues you are, that everybody jumped on the bandwagon to sing the 12 Days of COVID. And I just want to thank you for doing that. I think it's just awesome. Everybody rose to the fore. I think Alyssa did an absolutely amazing job cobbling together these disparate videos that came into her. Alan, thank you for participating. Mary and Tina knocked it out of the park with their bells. They were just great. And, I mean, everybody did an awesome job. And I just wanna, I want to thank you very, very, very much for doing something that was kind of a little bit unique without a lot of notice. And and it was just great. And Alan, as the the kind of Grinch, with Doug, Chief Coley, everybody was spectacular. So thank you and blessings upon you for 2021. Mr. Thornton, do you have anything you want to add? Mr. Burnett?
I do. I have I have something to add very quickly. One, you know, my Grinch persona came out because I didn't get to sing what I wanted to sing, but.
Wait a minute, that was your request. You requested, this is no joke.
Oh, I had I had other, another line prepared for, you know.
Oh, that's true. I did maybe say that you couldn't do that.
And I was I was vetoed. But anyway, I will be probably making contact with you, at least providing some information about a potential board retreat in this upcoming Friday update that I send out every Friday. So look for that. We're here internally thinking about how to have that retreat and, you know, still utilize the opportunity for a board retreat to help us plan as we now enter into 2021 and getting close to, you know. I'll be distributing budget packets and instructions to department heads here within the next week to 10 days. So, you know, we always kind of use the retreat to help us develop policies and strategies and all those kinds of things. But, you know, we're still in the middle of the COVID pandemic. It's worse than ever. You know, I saw the positivity rate.
You know, I saw the positivity rate today, it was up to something ridiculous, sixteen plus percent or something. It's crazy. So, you know, gathering together for an extended period of time is gonna be a difficult task. But we still want to provide the opportunity, if we can, to have something resembling a board retreat here coming up as we get into the preparation process for the budget. And I'll be providing you with some some ideas that I currently have and even potential locations, if we're gonna do anything beyond what we're doing for a meeting like this, which is virtual. So I want you to just get back with me when you get that information, tell me your thoughts. What you think, what do you want to do? And we'll discuss, you know, wins generally, that kind of thing, so be on the lookout for that. And other than that, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year as well.
Okay, that's wonderful, thank you very much. Is there any other comments or a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toby. Then let me take, it looks like Mayor Pro Tem has already signed off. I mean, you still need to do a roll call vote, Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Toby.
Yes.
Okay, God bless and Godspeed, thank you each of you, and may twenty twenty-one be a better year in many respects than twenty twenty, take care.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye bye.